All right. By that call this order, would you please stand and join me in the next? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, and then we'll go on to 2.0 for agenda approval. Has anybody got any questions or anything to name? No?
So move.
Okay, it's been moved in second to accept the agenda as stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, then we'll go on to 3.0, visitors to address the board on non-agenda items. Do we have any, Kristi?
No requests, yes.
Okay, so now we go on to 4.0, the consent agenda.
Second.
The tractor. Okay, it's been moved in second to accept the consent agenda as stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, and now we'll go on to 5.0. And so basically tonight is your organizational annual procedural business of multiple things of 5.1 through 5.13. Do I need to actually read those all?
I think you should read the titles of those because they're resolutions.
Yeah. Can I skip the numbers then, so I don't have to say all of them? Or do I have to say each one? I mean, the ORS things.
Yeah, you can say the ORS, just the resolution what they are.
All right, so about 5.1, which will be election of the 2024-25 board chair. 5.2 is the election of the 2024-25 board vice chair. 5.3 is the resolution 2024-25 number one, which will be designating Scott Stockwell as our chief administrative officer, school district clerk, and budget officer. 5.4 is resolution 2024 number two, authorizing the board chair and board vice chair to sign any and all documents. 5.5 is the resolution 2024-25 number three, designating Bank of the West, Inroads Credit Union, and State of Local Government Investment Pool as depositories for school funds. 5.6, resolution 2024-25 number four, designating self-insurance option for workers' compensation insurance. 5.7, resolutions 2024-25 number five, authorizing purchase and sale of property related to the district renovation and remodeling program. 5.8, 2024-25 school board meeting schedule. 5.9, local public contract review board and rules, which is ORS 279A-060 currently the school board. 5.10 is a jurisdictional contact for the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, which is OGE-C, formerly Jessica C., now Christine Wood. 5.11, district administrative representative in charge of the IDEA program and coordinator of the federal programs currently Lori Thompson. 5.12 is the district asbestos LEA representative currently Jared Plon. And 5.13, district safety officer formerly Jessica C., now Christine Wood. Now, what do we do? Anybody need to talk about them, questions about them? Anything good on those? That's your first reading of them. You're not done for the night.
We wait for discussion during the action items.
I can.
Or at least discuss.
You can discuss them now, or during the action items.
That's what I was thinking. Anybody have any questions about any of these?
Probably better to discuss them now, actually. And then in action items, we just vote.
Yep. Anybody?
You start right at the top and just do your board chair, who has a trister, who doesn't, and go on down.
Well, have we ever even done that before?
Well, otherwise we're throwing someone under the bus. So we've always known kind of.
Well, we always throw them under the bus. What are you talking about?
I know.
Just kidding. All right, so on 5.1, any discussion? Anybody just want to do this with all their life's worth?
I did pull a policy. I thought there wasn't a policy, but Ms. Killen said, I think there is. And there is a policy that says board chair is to do two consecutive, you know, two consecutives before somebody else. But it's a left. So that would mean Ms. Killen is out for board chair.
Just kidding.
So we'll leave somebody else for board chair. I don't believe that excludes her from being vice chair.
I don't think it does.
So that might be something where, you know, partnership.
I believe we did do, in exception of you, did we amend that and you took it for three?
I don't think we did.
Board chair.
I took it a couple of times. It was odd that I took it the first year when I was appointed, actually. But that was a challenging sport. So I don't know that I took it three in a row. I'm pretty sure I didn't. We tended to alternate. And then she wanted a second year, so she snagged it from me. So it doesn't matter. I really, but yes, I think we've just, we've all been there, so it's.
I have a trend, you haven't been there yet.
Yeah, you have.
So I did it during the first year of the pandemic.
Oh, that's.
But it was all virtual. It was a good time.
Yeah.
Lucky dog. That was gay.
Anyway, we've, yes. Was there a way? We're not, we don't have.
We can draw straws until we decide.
I can draw out some.
So Ryan, you were vice this year, right? Would you like to be president as your election year? Well, it can be.
Was there any year that just like wants it?
Come on, guys.
I don't have a diary.
She did. I mean, why did she, because she thought we were going to do the plaque this year and she wanted her name on the top of the plaque.
Oh, no, I just want it on all the plaques.
When we do the plaque, we do more than we do.
It's supposed to go in and, you know, pass the bond.
We can put your name on the back, too.
I don't mind.
Hide it in the walk, too.
I board chair from the side, no matter what. Try about really hard not to.
Well, and I told Scott, I go, whoever is it, it's not like I can still do the stuff during the day, anything that needs to be done, you know, during the daytime. So, and I'll still be doing, finishing up our negotiations in September. It's not like I can't, you know, come in and do some or sign papers.
Negotiations done.
Almost done.
So it sounds like we have a willing nominee.
I'm semi-willing, yes, I will.
Sure. Okay.
Especially since this may be my last year.
Okay.
No, shoot, yeah, I gotta get where to go. Whatever it is.
All right, everybody else, you know, isn't just jumping at the opportunity? They don't want to be nominated?
Anyway, we'll draw our nominations when the time comes in.
I'm thinking we just draw names.
We'll have our discussion about how it works.
Names out of a hat. All right. Okay, well, then we're going to go into 6.0, new business, and which is actually 6.1 first is superintendent evaluation. Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just on a roll.
We call you.
Okay, then let's get back to 5.2, okay, which is the election of the board vice chair, sorry. You know, I read them all and pass them.
So I am actually at a point where I can do that now. Things have settled down at work, so.
You can sign things?
No, I can do the vice chair thing.
Who will be chair?
I don't want to be chair this year. Happy to give that one to you.
All right, so you can send him things to sign if you need him during the day or Ryan can escape from work?
Yeah, yeah, pretty.
Pretty easy, long as Christine needs lots of things signed. You have to keep up with her.
I can break free from work.
All right, everybody else good? All right, so now on the rest of them, is there anything that we?
Maybe you want to check the calendar to make sure everybody's.
That's the one I was going to point out. Is look at the calendar.
I think maybe a glitch.
Yeah, I was thinking that too, but I'm looking for talking about the same glitches. I gotta look at my yearly calendar to tell you what I was thinking. There was something that we ran into this year, too, that I was trying to remember what it was that we wished we had have done.
Well, we added additional meetings and then removed them off the schedule over time, how much I recall.
And that was when we talked about having like a planning session type meeting. At the moment, we don't even have one until the 16th of October. And whether the things that some of you were thinking about can wait that long. Because we could always throw another meeting in, I don't know, August or first part of September if we need to.
Well, we can post for our, for Salem time. We can have a planning session down there if we wanted.
Can we have an offsite?
As long as you post it publicly.
We've done that before, I think. I know that we've put, my recollection is that we put one on the schedule, I think in October, just in case something needed to be addressed rather dramatically. So I feel like maybe that's not a bad idea in October, because there are five Wednesdays, but I can't recall. 100%.
One thing that I'm thinking about is I know it's 14th. I will be on vacation, so I will not be in district. So I'm wondering if we adjust that August one. And then I would like to maybe add a longer work session slash training in September, maybe the work session on the 11th. Make it for a longer day and pull in teaching and learning, business office, and other groups to kind of just give an update on, here's what we're doing this direction, be able to do some dialogue between people.
They have literally 15 minutes.
It would be more of a workshop training than a presentation. So I can't really do that. I was thinking the 11th, but we could adjust it.
You said August 1st.
Yeah, the August one. Well, it seems like there's something on the 28th.
Yeah, you're almost Labor Day weekend. That's the problem with that.
The September one.
If we have one meeting in August, that would kind of be my recommendation to do it early.
So the 14th, or no?
I mean, the 20th started early.
You're writing between the 21st and 21st, 7th.
You went to the 7th, not the 21st?
Yeah, I'm.
Are you thinking about how chaotic?
It's going to be a month ahead of the next work session, so that'd be all right.
And then we leave for the weekend, that same weekend.
I wouldn't be in state on the 7th. I'll be across country. That's what, I'll be out, so.
So we can't do the 21st?
But I will be out the 21st.
You're skipping out two weeks in a row. Oh, this is not, okay.
The September 11th will be the first couple of weeks of school. And last time we tried that, we pushed it.
Total chaos.
Yeah.
Better than being the first week of September first.
But they were not organized, nobody was tired.
Actually, the 28th, I don't see anything on the 28th. So we could have the one working on the 28th.
When is our pick thing?
Are we having one this year for sure? Okay.
Is that Tuesday?
Is it the 27th?
That's the 27th.
Right, Kristi, it's 27.
27.
Yes, I see.
Do we have a time, hours?
Four o'clock.
Actually, I'm asking the question and looking right at the.
No, it's one of those days.
August 27th.
You said four to six, so you said?
I don't have it on yet.
Four to six.
I put my.
Four to six.
Right, okay. Just making sure I got it all right. Okay. Well, after we're done partying that night, could I just do that night instead of making the 28th be longer or shorter?
So can you cross the 14th off and move one in August? Are you guys comfortable with that?
I don't think that you want in August to pick a date.
I think the 28th works. I won't be here, but.
Oh, you won't.
Then it doesn't.
I promise I won't schedule any more concerts for the rest of the year on Wednesdays.
The 7th work, or you're going on the 7th?
Okay.
You're going on the 7th.
And, but are you going the 27th?
Yeah, the 27th, but that's a.
So what about just doing the party and then going to a board meeting at 6:30?
Because we.
Oh, no, we just find other people. Okay, well, I always help with planning, too.
No, no, he's not going to be the 21st.
You know, this is starting to be like impossible anymore.
Who's on first?
So the 7th is the 28th.
What'd you say?
July 31st.
That's our first day of leadership advance.
It'd be organizational all the way around.
Okay, so what?
I've got that day, too.
Okay, so we get, we're having a meeting on a Tuesday night tonight. For when you're adding a meeting, is there any reason that we couldn't do August 1st, 2nd, 5th, 6th?
Do we need to add a meeting in August? Can we just cancel the 14th and keep the 28th? And then if we're going to add one, maybe add one later in September?
Or we can. Yeah, we can cancel the 14th and just go to 28th.
There's no reason not to.
You're back on the 28th for sure.
Yeah.
Let's do that. Just cancel the 14th.
That's what he said originally.
That's easy.
It's all that works, sir.
And the 11th will go for a longer day for work sessions, so that's all right.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, if you have an emergency thing to bring up, go ahead.
Okay.
Me virtually for that.
But is that when, so do we need to list it both work session and planning session? If we're going to have anything, or we're just going to say that's in August and we're done? Okay. Kristi, did you catch all that? I think so.
Making away, cancel 14th, keep 28th. Is that right?
Yes.
But then don't forget the 27th, four to six.
Oh, 27th, that's the.
Picnic. I'm just making sure we all are on our schedules.
Also, 8th to 10th, the morning welcome. We'll be in the high school commons.
On the same day.
Cafeteria, same day. More than likely won't start at 8 o'clock, like 8:30, 9 o'clock.
Is that going to start out in the cafeteria, you said, and then move into the, I mean, into the home town?
We're just going to do cafeteria.
Cafeteria, oh.
Is it all south?
Yeah, it's good.
Let's call the commons.
That's also.
We'll try to go to the commons.
I'm not saying it should be, I'm just saying, I just found that out, that they changed the name to the commons as the cafeteria.
It's okay, I like it.
Okay, so we'll just have to.
The new commons.
Yeah, the new commons, okay.
Get rid of the new gym. It's just the. Still the gym to be.
Just call it the girls' gym. So that's the 27th for the new?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the time for the six.
On the same day.
And board chairmen have to be at that stuff, so we shouldn't take that day.
I think I'm taking it off.
Okay, you need to anyway. All right, so let's see. Do we have anything else on here, though, that we need to worry about? Or we just vote on them later? Anybody got anything?
No, for now.
I think everything else built in, it looks like.
Okay. Okay. Actually, I should probably ask Christine if she's good with the ones we're just going to vote you for. Just, just. All right.
Two business.
Okay, so now I will go on to 6.0, new business. 6.1, superintendent evaluation. And I can't remember doing this, so Kristi believes that we read this before publicly. The whole thing?
Whatever, I guess.
Okay, you guys are going to be here for a while. Okay, just checking. Yeah, thank goodness. Okay, lots of little letters, though. All right, so the St. Helen School District Board of Directors has completed the annual evaluation of Superintendent Scott Stockwell for the 2023-24 school year. All five school board members have served on the board for at least three full years and have been able to observe and be part of the successes achieved during this unprecedented year. The evaluation focused on, one, visionary district leadership, two, ethics and professional norms, three, inclusive district culture, four, culturally responsive instructional leadership and improvement. We're off on numbers. Do you see that?
Yes.
Can I just change three to five and add an eight?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we're going to change the next one. Okay, so the next one, number five, is the communication and community relationships. Number six, effective organizational management. Number seven will be effective financial management. And number eight is policy governance and advocacy. Members reviewed Superintendent Stockwell's performance for this school year as well as the duration of his superintendence in the St. Helen School District. In those nine years, he has created a number of programs and community partnerships that have enhanced the district as well as the community to include, three successful bond campaigns that resulted in building a new middle school, a new alternative high school, and a soon-to-be fully renovated high school scheduled to be complete in 2025; the reopening of the Columbia City Elementary School; the implementation and growth of the advancement via individual determination AVID program; the addition of a teaching and learning team; the implementation and growth of the response to intervention RTI work; opening a family resource center; two district strategic planning efforts; partnership and regular meetings with countywide first responders; partnership and regular meetings with community faith-based teams; partnership with the St. Helens Park and Rec Program or Department; and the implementation of the preschool promise program. In the areas of professional standards, we have determined that Superintendent Stockwell's performance in the areas of visionary district leadership, ethics and professional norms, communication and community relations, effective organizational management, effective financial management and policy, governance and advocacy was accomplished. The board selected a rating of effective performance in the categories of inclusive district culture and culturally responsive instructional leadership and improvement. The board appreciates the way Superintendent Stockwell maintains an open-door policy for staff and community members. He has worked closely with the licensed and classified unions to provide competitive wage and benefit packages while preserving a responsible budget. His spending initiatives have allowed the district to restart the curriculum adoption cycles outlined by the state, open a family resource center, and to provide robust summer programs offerings at the K-312 levels the last two summers. Additionally, he has maintained a high level of budget transparency that has fostered increased trust. We will be working with Superintendent Stockwell over the next several months to develop goals for our district and look forward to working together to continue to make our district successful, acknowledged on this ninth day of July 2024. And you guys will all be signing that as you noted it. Okay. All righty. Any questions or anything that you didn't think was up there? Look, all right. How about you? You did? Okay.
The acknowledgement of the work's all done. It still has like a couple of work to do, so it's exciting.
I think we left off at least 20 things or something.
I know, I was trying to start the things that were actually listed here.
And I know, and I was sitting there going, there's got to be more than that. It's. All right, well, then we'll go on to 6.2, which is the St. Helen's High School graduation discussion. Who's discussing first?
I kind of just, I put it out there because I know that the board is in charge of graduation and I think that we kind of have thrown it out there for anybody else to do it. So because we have dialogue and things that we bring up at graduation, this is a planning meeting, it would be appropriate for us to talk about them, whether it be the who, how, and where, or what is kind of on the table. I don't really have an agenda for it.
Or is your, do you have any focus, like venue or process or inclusion? Or is just focus?
Just really open. I did find a couple of red flags. I felt like when we are talking student foundation and we have some scholarships that were given out during graduation before, they were not this year. And I think that those should be brought back into the graduation ceremony because they allow public to see those scholarships being given out. It doesn't need to be all of them, but maybe we select the two or three that are meaningful and that should be.
Kind of those traditional ones, or ones that are strongly community-supported, so more community is able to see who's it is.
Right, absolutely. Or know that that endowment fund is available to contribute to it that way. Also, I don't know, I think that we haven't changed in quite a while, maybe 30 years. And if there is any way to envision something else, it would be great to do so.
And I was going to say on that same part of it, and I can't remember where it was by the time that you graduated or you, but I know clear back only because I have the giant Chronicle pages. But at graduation, there was more like 12 different main ones from like the one you were talking about. But then also there was like the, basically your top female athlete, your top male athlete. There was different, yeah, there was multiple of them. And, you know, I mean, and like you're talking about community-wise, the only ones that then see those now are the parents that are there on that particular night. We're not even putting anything in the newspaper showing them anymore.
I think there's a way to come up with a hybrid because in years past, especially.
Graduation.
Especially the, when we did it in the gym. They're hot, you warm. There's got to be a way that we can recognize students in a meaningful way and not have a four-hour, three-and-a-half-hour.
I wondered, could you, even if you don't make the presentation in graduation, you were saying when we did the presentation, but could you just recognize those awards in the program, the graduation program? You've got to be careful that you're not announcing it too early and have pre-printing it.
Yeah. I think what we should do is have some goals and give that work over to the high school and say, here's what we'd like to see. Give some ideas. And, you know, we can certainly give them some ideas like that. I think that's appropriate, but they may have some other ideas that we might like or we might say, eh, no, that's not the direction we're going. I think that might help generate some good ideas. I just, it seems like the student should at least stand up and be recognized because I think if it's just in, I could be wrong, but I think if it's just in the program, not everybody sees, check the program, so. But I do think having the recognition program.
To march up across the stage and stuff, this year would have been. I'm not, I'm not sure how it would have been accepted. I mean, we had a couple of people that got a lot of awards. And, you know, I mean, people handing them out. And of course, well, you don't want that at graduation. That's, it's, it's, it's okay, it was fine. But at some point, the other kids, it's a celebration of everybody's cumulative achievement. And the individual achievements are probably already complete. So we want to be careful on how much we recognize, how much effort we go to, to recognize all of those things, too. I think they're good. I think there were some surprise things. I always remember the chance to become scholarship was a part of graduation. And that was a surprise for everybody. It was a community thing. But we just have to be kind of careful that we're not. That's something for this high school to think about, you know, what do we, what, how, what do we want to do? And how much longer do we want to make it? You can, I mean, they've been shortening it down to where they say you get 90 seconds for your speech. Make it good. So there are things that they're doing to speak things out.
Like, I personally felt like it was a good term. It did lack some of those, but it ran like a well-oiled machine. And I don't think it would be terrible to add 15, 20 minutes to recognize some students.
No, I know. It's, 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 it's fine. I was just, we have to be careful. I hope you do.
Yeah.
We have in years past, though, even turned the students around where they were facing the crowd. And the board was right against the stadium kind of thing so that they could look at their kids instead of us looking at their kids. So there's a lot of different ideas that could be.
Well, we used to have risers and in the gym.[1784.05] Well, we used to have risers and in the gym, the problem with gym, it limits the number of tickets. I love it being outside because anybody can come, right? We don't have the trading tickets that we had once upon a time, or scolded them, so to speak. But yeah, having the students maybe put up some risers so the kids face the parents. I always feel guilty, this year was different, but years past it rained.
When we're getting poor, don't.
Those poor kids are just.
Yeah, I've always disagreed with that.
Yeah.
Although then we get the conversation that the students don't get, or the parents don't get to see the students if it's covered. And I'm like, you all are covered, so you would rather be covered and your students not? That's how we're ruling? So I'm not really agreed with that.
And they get drowned and get to go get their picture taken over after they get their diploma, totally drowned like a rat.
In regards to the celebration of individual achievement, I think sometimes we get to the point where we're like, oh, well, we don't want to overemphasize one person's achievement over the group and the collective. But the reality is, is that an individual's achievement should be recognized when they're doing those things. We should aspire to see what those folks are doing and see what's possible and not discount that we can get it, but rather start envisioning, how do we achieve it? And I think that when we remove that opportunity to celebrate those things, frankly, I think we should be acknowledging every student and their individual choices in groups. Who's going to college, who's going to go to the military, who's gonna take a gap year? I think everybody should be acknowledged in their groupings because we as a district have encompassed this belief that there are no one ways to get to where we want to go. And that every pathway is a viable pathway to the future. And our goal is to prepare you for that, whatever you choose.
And that could be done when announcing their name.
Fairly quickly.
Yeah, and we didn't recognize any dual credits. We didn't recognize any of some of those other processes of high achievers either. And I think I'm done with the like non-decoration because decorating their hat is pretty exciting and most of them really enjoy that and they get to do that in every other school.
I also understand why there's a conversation about that. But the reality is, I have seen higher education allow for some individuality and for some supports. And for some of these folks, this is the one opportunity in that environment to be able to express themselves in a meaningful and functional manner. And I'm not discounting the other side of this conversation. But I believe inclusive means that we set parameters and we say, you don't do it, then we're gonna give you a blank hat. Otherwise, I feel like we should be offering some opportunities to express individualism.
My visual cringe is opening, opening it up completely. And I know that in the past, balls being bounced around, it starts discrediting. So as long as there's parameters around, here's what's accepted.
Yeah.
And here's what's not, what's not. I just think we need to be careful that it is a formal ceremony and there's other celebrations as well. But it is a formal ceremony that's traditional. But to be unique for each person, I think that's relevant. I just want to make sure that it maintains that sense of, you know, there was a lot of work, you spent thirteen years to get here. Let's make sure that it's a.
And your families go into that one. Your whole family, the community, they're going to that one. They're not going to the other ones that are more for the parents.
Yeah.
When you throw your hat in the air and it's totally decorated, we probably have a lot. I was gonna say, a lot more stuff goes flying than, yeah. Yeah, and you don't find your hat as quickly.
And then we also don't have any policy that says that you have to have one credit to graduate, like be within one credit. So my other thought was, do we need to talk about actual policy that says when you can graduate? Because right now it's up to the teacher discretion and admin discretion and sometimes it's two credits or sometimes it's a half a credit. There's not a lot of consistency of who can walk.
I think that'd be good. I need support for our principals and our teachers to have peers standard.
Yeah, I don't like subjective components like that, that gets into inequities that happen.
And I realize in a bigger town, there might be a whole bunch of people that don't notice because they don't even know half of the kids. But here, when a student has gone to school here their entire life and then they don't get to walk with all of their friends, I don't think you could almost take anything more away from them than that. And you're just not gonna get your diploma until you get the stuff done. But especially when you're that close, you know? And I mean, we bring even kids back over here at Plymouth and it's six months later, but they're getting to walk with their class when they do that, even if they're done months ahead of time. So just as much the other way too. As long as it's not your two whole years behind of everything, you know, that's a different story. But somebody that's that close, let them walk with their class. I do have a hard time not doing that. Finding out that we only especially maybe have one or two only that didn't get to do it.
I think with that policy, we need to be okay with one, two, or whatever, four good terms based on the standards comparable to other districts. There needs to be like a plan, like I'm walking at one credit shy. Here's my plan that I've got to make up that credit. But I got close.
Agreed.
Like maybe you wear your yellow sash if you're within one credit. But if you're within two credits, you don't get your yellow sash and you can walk.
I would like to not make it that obvious.
But they're still getting to walk, like, I, my son would have enjoyed walking.
I had to show that I was enrolled in that summer school program to get, to be able to walk. I had to show that I was actually in the future.
I mean, I don't want to loosen the restriction to just say, you should walk because you were a part of this school. It is a culmination of achievement to get there.
Right now, it only says
Oh, I know.
that if you can prove to the board that you will graduate by September first, which I feel like my child did.
And I'm not discounting that, I'm saying as we get to a formalized system.
So we should make it a lot stricter in writing so that we don't have any other people asking.
And driven towards demonstrated plan of action that is well thought out on how you will achieve this. So it should be both.
And I don't know what has been being practiced in the last few years just because I haven't had any foster children for a while or foreign exchange students. But both of them got to walk because sometimes they either didn't have, you know, foreign exchange especially didn't have anything. Or if I got a foster child that actually came from another city and could be way behind. But this is the year they're graduating and we're working on catching them all up, anything that's left. Or their school even has different requirements for the, they may have the right amount of, you know, credits, but they don't have the right ones that our district would have said that they had to have. So I just think as much as those kids can be looked at.
So they have best students, don't get a regular diploma to be. That's like you give an honorary degree to some dignitary, but they often aren't taking more cultural exchange. And I'm not sure that they get a regular, if they do, they do. I'm not opposed to that, but I would think that
I know, actually, maybe they do.
Gets a, gets, they get, they get a different certificate, I would think, that says, hey, you were here.
Most of the exchange students that I'm aware of from outside of America essentially lose a year of schooling.
Yeah.
This doesn't count for their educational process. It's an experience and it's a valuable one.
Yes, and as far as, I kind of wonder about, okay, you say you'll be done by September one. Look, we started that as a freshman. We said, if you're done by this day, you get it. And now, you didn't get it done in four years, what's gonna happen in the next month? And then do they actually get it done in that two months' time? So I don't know, what are, what is our success rate? And if it is high, then I'm all for the saying we can do that. But if our success rate is, well, they walked and that they really didn't make it by September, then I don't think that that's a reliable thing.
We should obviously look at that.
Look at our.
By hunch, by hunch is, most kids that are within a credit that walk would stay. I think most will.
Make it by September.
And we want some opportunities for kids to make it that up. I think that's good data for us.
I mean, it's just, I can't make a decision without that.
And I think that'll help determine, is it, you know, we've got only half a credit. It's like kids who wouldn't have credit, they don't make, well, then maybe that should be a pressure. Or if it's, oh, every kid's had two credits, go back and take care of it. Then, up to two credits you want. So I think that would be a good.
And those makeup things need to be.
The other side too, those that you didn't allow to, if they even tried.
I think too that we can't let those makeup things wait till the last semester because it's physically impossible to get the hours in. So a little more of the, we have a lot of prompting that's too late. And you know, hey, you know, you got, if you don't, you're not gonna graduate and get to walk if you don't get nineteen credits this quarter. That should have started three years earlier. And it does, but maybe not with the same level of authority. So I think that really tracking and saying, okay, now you're gonna go to summer school between your freshman and sophomore year, your sophomore and junior year if you're planning to graduate because there aren't enough hours otherwise to do it. So you and parents that are putting it together, and this is what we're doing. And it does also help that we had, at one point, the CCE thing. I mean, you would all know the kid that we had and had that really for credit recovery was a, was a huge thing that was available on Saturdays and evenings. And he could come in and say, okay, you know, between now and the game, you're gonna go in and work on taking a class and you're gonna tab Saturday. So there was alternate times and seemed that, because we picked up a huge number of credits in a reasonable period of time, summers and evenings and whatever it was, but.
Just as much as how we did it then though, could we do it possibly virtually? And undo it online?
Yeah, we could do it during the J term, that's what the J term does currently.
So.
Calling it credit recovery though? Are we just saying, you're now going to school online?
Well.
No, they can take extra credits, so they can take twelve credits in a semester.
They take extra credit, they take additional credits. The other piece is, we require twenty-four credits to graduate. We offer eight credits a year.
There's thirty-two available.
Yes. So I would respectfully request we don't look at prior data on who pushed forward or who didn't. Because it would be discounting the fact that the school experience in the last four years for every student has been dramatically shifted. And so trying to put a data set on a normal experience to what we're looking at, I think would be not fair to the students that we're currently looking at right now. And I think I would rather look at an opt-in system that says, let's give this an opportunity and then we'll do the data and see where are we at? Because then we can always pull it back. But I feel like if we look at the traditional metrics of things, things went very, very south. And we still are working through this, and I think this is the last group that started high school in that. But every class for the next X number of years went through the same things in many ways. And so I, I would hesitate to say we should be looking at the traditional thing of, you know, well, this many people were this close and they didn't do it.
People are doing it or not. I mean, so it, it seems like when you're up against the wall and they say, it doesn't matter what your past experience was, you've got three months to get this done and get this one credit. And I don't think whether they went through COVID or not has any bearing on whether that would get done or not. I think what it does is, let people do that and they don't do that when it comes down to the last ditch effort.
Yeah, I agree.
And I don't think it would make any difference at all.
We have a culture right now that says, you're behind and you can go get your GED. Where we should have a culture that says, hey, let me hold your hand and I'm gonna guide you. And will you meet with me after school? Will you meet me on Saturday? Will you meet me here? Because I think our options are there. We have the ed mentum and the credit recovery, we have all those options, but we're not reaching out into the last four weeks. And we've already said, you should go get your GED, your junior year.
Literally, I have a granddaughter that literally finished her last requirement credit with principal, counselor, and teacher. How people were putting on their robes before graduation. But the principal was willing to do that in a different school district, but.
And we didn't.
And they said.
You're a week out, sorry.
I mean, it came when she crossed the stage, the principal says, and this one, one was pushing, one was dragging, and one was walking with her, but we got her done today.
And that was a celebration then.
And that was, that was a celebration, but it, I, it's kind of a family joke. But yes, it got done. And, and so there is that. And I, I think as you get bigger, that's almost impossible, but.
I do want to say though, we also have staff that work really hard and I think that some of the staff that's been like, oh, you're being honorary about culture in our school. But I think they also admit that we have culture issue in our schools. Some of those people will sit down on their weekend and drive their thirty minutes to come into town with students and help them.
Yeah.
So we do have individual teachers that are trying really hard.
Anyway. Those are, I mean, this is worthwhile conversation, it's.
Hey, look, if you can do the class of seventy-eight and get competencies done in the two weeks before graduation, you can do anything.
Yeah, I think this is the conversation. I think there's some value and merit, some way to reward a kid who may be two credits behind, but has gone to every summer school between his freshman year and his senior year and has done everything they can to graduate. Maybe they have a different ability than somebody who is two credits behind, but wait till their senior year, week before, and say, oh my gosh.
I do think it should be looked at in some of those. I mean, as somebody that dropped out of school and then failed a significant number of classes and then had to do credit recovery and everything else, I basically did night school and day school for a year to catch up. And that was because I had teachers that were pushing me once I got back there. So I think that those students that, whatever their life circumstances are, that create those problems, they should be given some additional grace and support to get to where they want to get to, if they're making the effort.
And I appreciate Kelly, you noting. I think, I would say it's more of, most of our teachers in this district are, will go that extra mile, try to help pull that kid across. So I do appreciate you noting that. It's tough.
It's just process.
Yeah.
So can I add one more topic on the same topic though? Is, I'm thinking it's time to look at doing Plymouth High's graduation in a different location. Both wind reasons, if nothing else. But there was an awful lot of kids there that had very upset families because they were given only a certain amount of tickets, which we've all been through at the high school. But we moved them out to a football field, hopefully over, being able to override that issue. These guys are very restricted in how many family members they can have in the tickets. And so, and it isn't that big. Even if we wanted to give them all six more tickets, there's not room for that many more tables over there on the outside park. So I, I don't know what the solution is, I'm just thinking that it's maybe time to look at that, especially with more kids and the kids being.
You can walk about two hundred yards and go to the cafeteria.
That's fine too.
I appreciate the stage and the sound system and you can hear.
Easily, that's what I'm thinking.
Literally, it's the cafeteria next door.
And I swear that wind has been an issue for like three years there. It feels way worse than being out at the high school. And I don't know why, because I freeze it out out there, seven years with wind. But keep getting hit on the windiest night with everything blowing all over the place. And anyways, and you can't even hardly hear. And not always does their, even their microphone work really well, so.
Cameras don't work real well.
Yeah, so just a lot of things that I think would work better if they got to be on the inside somewhere.
And good news, we are in the process of finalizing absolutely experienced principal for Plymouth. And that'll be one of the things we'll talk about is how to make a change with graduation. I'd have the barbecue at Plymouth, graduate at middle school, a great.
We have a great courtyard though at the middle school as well.
Probably maybe play with the weather, you know, depending on that.
With the stage and everything, I mean, they have a stage. For heaven's sake, they're, they're set up. We could really do a nice job in that cafeteria. And I think there's plenty of room in that cafeteria for what we had. Parking is better. We can set up a YouTube camera that will allow them to have live viewing without too much effort. I'm sure that there's Wi-Fi there that we can set up a, set a decent camera. So there's many, many, many advantages to that. And quite frankly, they should assemble at Plymouth, get all their stuff on, and then have a really cool march in from there to the cafeteria at the middle school, much like we do when we assemble our kids and then march them to the, they can march through there and come through and play pomp and circumstance, do the whole, maybe just the way that it should be done.
And I'm confident we can turn on pomp and circumstance at the middle school and hear it over here, and we hear their announcements at the regular basis.
Yes.
Might be a really nice walk.
And then also too. And then also too, then the cafeteria here at Plymouth could have tables put in it too, even if we have to bring them from other buildings to make sure, because that whole room, yeah, for the barbecue afterwards, because that, that whole room could have been full of tables, and it wasn't.
If we're pulling data, can I be line us again to our dropout rates? Because our February, March, April, especially junior, senior dropout rates are pretty high.
I, I think because, I kind of split that one up a bit. This year was just a challenge to get the whole thing organized because of the way that it was, but that can be a really solid graduation. Yeah. I like it all. I like that.
We're really high.
I've got some data that's region-wide, too. There's some concerns also just wrapped around the tents that we really probably should take up at it.
Yes.
Now, will I change the school times? Where I wanna do a shout out to one of my children, because it was really funny, where we were talking about the times of start, and then she said, well, yeah, but I'm always late, and I'm like, well, now you won't be, because you have another half an hour.
Success.
So I, would, if, if we had, and this, this is maybe too far off the wall, so you can just kind of click it right there, but if we had a school within a school, like for the CTE area, would they have, much like in college, they have their own little subceremony to then have the main graduation?
We could do anything we wanted. I would, I would, I expect parents would wanna see their children graduate there, well.
That's what, I mean, we're already in state, you have the engineering graduation, and you have the arts graduation, and then you have the main graduation.
We, yeah, we could do, we could do something like that. We could also have everybody that's a CTE concentrator, please stand up, sit down. Everybody who's going to a four-year school, please stand up, sit down. A, a tiny bit of hesitation of separating them out, having them come through, because it begins to divide up the school a little bit. But I, I think recognizing is really important.
I mean, we've talked about subschool.
Yep.
Or where they get to wear their different ribbons.
Yeah, well, I mean, we've, there are, it's another work session, so I'll just.
One, one other thing, too, is I was gonna say, I know that, I mean, we've been crazy just doing from virtual to adding, you know, learning at home, to being online, to you name it. We have all kinds, from our own system to kids that are coming in that have done it even for only one year, maybe outside of us, whatever, is figuring out some way. I, I just watched a lot at graduation night, and actually went and talked to one of the students who actually went on a bench and sat down and honestly didn't even know what he was supposed to do, even though he was signed up to go with them for their senior party. Didn't know anybody, he didn't know any staff, and he was all paid for. And I have to say sadly, he didn't even know what to do, and he finally went, got his car and went home.
And that's a virtual or a Plymouth kid?
No, uh-uh, virtual. Was over at the high school.
That's a parent ran, though, and that board changes every year, and.
Well, it is, but I'm just, just saying, sample that he wasn't included in things enough to even know who anybody was to even talk to.
Were they leaps and bounds with that virtual program? And if you recall, the year prior, they weren't in line, like we wanted to. Appreciate, appreciate Kelly's advocacy, you know, we want them mixed in, unless they say, no, I don't wanna be mixed in. With Martin kind of leading that, he's really done a nice job, and I'm sure we point that out, he'll be on top of that.
And that's why I was saying, it's, maybe it's just some things that are along the way to include these kids, even if they don't decide they wanted to be at sports, or they didn't wanna be in band or choir, but even to know that that's an option for them to be able to do more.
Are we doing a virtual student handbook?
Yes.
Yeah, but you're asking kids to read that, okay, so. We all know how that goes. Okay.
Support their children.
I honestly read all of my handbooks, it's the one time you're gonna get me throughout the year. Give it to me, it's that, so I can refer to it.
Well, and one thing that was interesting to me is, you think of a lot of people who pull their kids in their home, is the parents that are real involved in life, wanna pay them money and want their kids. And I, I have to say truly, I was somewhat surprised to see how many were there, that their parents didn't even come to graduation. They came, and they were there, and at least gotta do it, but didn't even have family. So that was kind of, you know, it was the opposite way. It was like, one of them told me that his parents didn't care, they didn't, he just heated, and he wanted to graduate, though, so, but he didn't even get to come to graduate, you know, be involved with all the other kids. So just kind of losing those kids too out there, I would like to figure out ways that we can involve them just as much, getting to know kids in the school. Maybe they'll even come back more if we're involving them more, won't have to do that. But anyway, I just don't want it to be easy, parent can just go, forget it, and I'm not gonna worry about you anymore, you're on your own, and yeah, leave them hanging, so.
Speaking of virtual, we have to, next step to start working on how many other possible Oregon and some of these other people.
Yeah, I'm gonna work with Martin, we'll come up with a plan, and it's.
It's just, it's kind of like NIL deals in college.
Yeah, we do, we do offer a stipend for some of our homeschool families that wanna participate in our programs, so we'll be reviewing, reviewing that. We do, you know, look at the numbers, we lose about an average two kids a week.
I can, I can see where things like a monthly in-class experience, like if you're to have a virtual science, that you'd have a science day, and there's some science teachers, and we'd have a science day in a classroom where they can actually do some experiments, or an art day, or a ceramics day, so that there's just a few enrichment activities that, that because they're local, we can offer to our online students, where if they were virtual from another district or another Oregon, whatever, blah, 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 they, those kids aren't in that, but I, the homeschool kids are now starting to do some of that, you know, the private homeschool kids. And so I think for our virtual kids, maybe having some, and it also helps solve some of this, I don't know anybody issue. And we start bringing them in for some, I, I just, I'd say some social group activities that, that enhance their experience beyond, instead of saying, here's a microscope, it's, we're having microscope at that bottom this time, and there's enough time to know about it, and then come in again, we will have these things ready for you.
We've, we've begun that, and we, and I think Martin's did a really nice job starting that. And the last thing that he started is that all of our virtual teachers, I believe, have at least two days a week are in, or with the welcome center, or the family resource center.
So a kid can get a job.
Kids come in for help, and they've done a couple of evenings, and I know his goal is to wrap that up.
Yeah, and that, that puts us a step ahead of, then you start publicizing that, by the way, we do this for our virtual students, yes, you're virtual, but you have the opportunity for direct personal contact, which is, I think, sometimes it's.
Real planning sessions.
A real person. I mean, there's some things like that that we can start to work on. And the other thing is, would we do better in our graduation if, I, I kind of brought it up, and I'm, and I, I think it's for another work session, but a, a thought is, if we had, some districts have a, a CTE high school within their high school, and the kids then take, they get their English and math credits in alternative ways, or at least things that, because we, we bury students with all of our math, not all, but a good portion of our math and a good portion of our English and our writing are all still oriented towards college bound. But maybe we need to have some things that are oriented towards those kids that are more oriented towards the mechanical, the hands-on, the different, there are different styles of learning. I, I watched Temple Grandin again this weekend, and there are different kinds of brains and different ways of learning, for sure, and these people, they need that opportunity to learn in their way, and to hammer them and say, well, you know, you gotta get that third year of math, you gotta get this or this, and it has, it's just a barrier, and I think we need to maybe teach them in the way that they learn for those folks, so.
Which also is, so I went and spent the week at conscious discipline, and that was something we talked about with our kindergarten, first grade, sixth, through sixth grade, but that we used to have half-day kindergarten, and we still have kiddos that don't really need to be there full day. And maybe by having some other options, it would allow them to, maybe they go home at noon, and, because mom's home, and they're fine with it, but they're opting out, which like, I wanna do a half-day, and they can go out there and do some other things, so that we can lighten the teacher classroom load as well, which I thought was pretty unique, I would love to do that. Or maybe your kid is signing up for like, a more athletic or a more outdoor sort of, yeah, direction, just in general, for their learning path in their grade school. And then it had drum line and yoga, and just all the things that is all physical movement, and allowed kids to be expressing themselves, while we did a lot of deep breathing and morning circles, and holding people in a wellness area and wishing them well, and just a lot of rituals, so.
Well, I still want from day one that we do the, what do you wanna be when you grow up thing, and that can change every single year, all the way through, but at least you know you've got that child going in the direction of, what do I wanna be when I grow up? Doesn't mean it won't change, because they might be a fireman when they're in first grade, and by, you know, wanna be a house builder by the time that they, or a science teacher, right? But all I'm just saying is that if we just kind of know, instead of, we don't even know that they're lost and they're not even getting the things that they sure would like to have for a direction that they would like to go, so.
You're not supposed to ask that question.
They get it every year, but yeah.
I think what would be really helpful is, when we have our next meeting, to generate some of those things that we wanna have, partly for my goal, and also some of these ideas that we can direct our staff to start working on. Because when we're doing a planning session, we need to maintain that sixty thousand foot level, and say, this is what we want, here, now, try to get us there, and then have folks bring stuff back to us to review and say, yeah, you're headed in the right direction, or adjustments. Because I think as a board, your role, right, is to guide them from that level. If you get too far into the weeds, I think this is actually whose side of the direction we wanna go.
I mean, this is a good September eleventh, we talked to, but one of the questions we need to ask is, what do you need to be, what do you think you need to be successful, and how can we get that for you? Because a lot of these people, they'll buy into our idea, and they're just, but I don't have anything, I don't have what I need. And so we have to be careful and, and make sure that we're, I, I do remember with the whole idea of student enterprise, a meeting with the superintendent, and he, we just met for lunch, and in that very short conversation, his question to me was, how can I help? What do you need? Do you need this? And he went through a litany of things. Do you need any of these? And I said, right now, I just needed your attention, so that I could know I was not moving in a false direction. And, but that immediate assurance of, what do you need? How can I help? You have the chance to fail, and it'll be okay. And I thought that was, and that changed the, the whole direction of many CTE programs across this country, but it certainly did in St. Ellens.
I had an oops card in conscious discipline, and you acknowledged that we all make oopses.
Yeah, oopses. When we built Grace Baptist, Lee Park printed up shirts that said, oops. And we, we all wore them. So, so yes, oops, because yes, oops was common out there.
We have a shirt that says that.
Volunteers, but.
My shirt would say, if you're not making mistakes, you're not part of the party.
Yeah, you're not Michael Jordan.
I, I stay that off. I think Kristi K. and I can sit down and gather this conversation.
I was thinking it's great that it's recorded these days.
What, what might be in the purview before we get a call.
All right, well, then we'll go into six point three superintendent report, Mr. Scott.
Yeah, my, my report's relatively short, concise. You all received the admin and confidential agreement. It's pretty close to the same, the agreement piece, with the addition of adding Juneteenth as a holiday. The other piece, though, is, and I think you've seen to the added salary schedule, we've worked to move all of our admin into the top twenty-five percent paid in the region. We've done that for a couple of reasons. One, we wanna recruit, retain the best. We have a current middle school principal year over middle school, just hired an amazing CFO. We don't get that ability to retain and recruit and hire people without having competitive salaries. So that's one of the big reasons why I pushed everybody up into that category, and I can give you, if you share, some of the school districts in our region are all of them that we compared to the reach into that twenty-five percent. So North Clackamas, Portland Public, Hillsborough, Forest Grove, Russian Barlow, Tiger, Scott Hoo's, Sherwood, Tilma, Ian Connie, Warren, Seaside, Mononia, Stucke, Astoria Banks, Clackamas, Gaston, Napa, Jewel, and Rainier. So all of the, the school districts within the, the Northwest Regional ESD, plus some of the metro ones, because that's where we're gonna be trying to draw, recruit, retrain, retain people. The other piece that we had to be really aware of is, as we moved our teacher's salary up to be competitive, they're actually in that top twenty-five. Matter of fact, our first grade teachers are the number one paid teacher in the region, in, within this group. And then our veteran teachers, I think, are number two or three, depending on how you, how you look at this special education incentive bonus that we provide. Because of that, you take the teacher's overall salary, and divide that up by a hundred and ninety days, and you look at a principal's salary or AP's salary, and divide that over two hundred and fifteen, two hundred and twenty days, the daily rate starts not looking so great to wanna be administrator. And what I mean by that is, you can teach and make more per day than I can as an administrator. So we've had to adjust that. In doing that, that's also pushed us up in the top twenty-five. But again, we're already seeing benefits, and here's a good example. We're currently hiring somebody out of Portland Public who was working in a option school and was tagged to be the option principal there, as my understanding and slightly kind of same. So we're able to do those types of things and recruit, hopefully retain the best. So that's, in a quick nutshell, the confidential administrator, confidential agreement. Do you have any questions?
I don't have questions, but I'm gonna put just a little bit of a stand here. I have significant concerns across the board in a race that we will never win across the state. And this has nothing to do with St. Ellens in general, but the wage race that I see in public sector, and I am a public sector employee as a manager, is getting to the point where we cannot continue these things. And I have, I appreciate.
In a quick nutshell, the confidential administrator, confidential agreement. Do you have any questions?
I don't have questions, but I'm going to put just a little bit of a stand here. I have significant concerns across the board in a race that we will never win across the state. And this has nothing to do with St. Helens in general, but the wage race that I see in public sector. And I am a public sector employee as a manager, is getting to the point where we cannot continue these things. And I have. I appreciate the people that we have, I appreciate the professionalism that we have. But as we continue in this process and we continue on these, these roles, we're going to have to take a look at what we're doing in the long term. Not on this one, not on anything else, but this is not a sustainable course of action for public service. It really is not. And.
Cross the border.
We are going to have to figure out in the next 10 years, I suspect, what that means for us as an entity. Because I don't think we can continue this path after this.
I agree with you saying, and to clarify especially for folks who may be listening. This is in response, it's St. Helens currently to be competitive, recruit, retain the best and address what inflation has done, right? And with our budget, we are able to sustain what we're suggesting for teachers and for admin. We've also added some folks and unlike Portland Public, Beaverton. Sure about Hillsboro, but I would say on Kaiser, they're looking at laying off people. We as a board and district has managed our finances, so we're able to grow and do this. However, I agree, we can't continue as a public entity statewide with that trajectory. And there is discussion about a statewide salary schedule, I think that might be helpful because that does take that away. So I can, I'll give you guys updates where we're at with that. I think there's another meeting coming up here in August.
And I do appreciate the context because the only reason that I'm saying yes to this is because of the stewardship that we've done for the last seven years that I've been doing this. And the focus on the budget and ensuring that we've done things in the correct manner. So it makes it that we can do this. It was more a global scale of, I have concerns.
Yeah, I understand. I just want to make sure everyone understands.
Yeah, and I mean, the bad part is not just when we were even talking about it here and I totally understand all of the. Everybody is in a situation where all by itself alone is where am I going to live on the wages that I'm making? And it's like, that has just gotten so out of control as far as numbers for everybody. That, that's got to be a big issue to me, that's got to be looked at somehow for everybody like schools and police and. Fire department to even be able to maintain on the budget that they've got. You, you can't give them enough money yet alone, you can't have them being homeless over in a parking lot so they can come to school first and experiment because they can't afford even to rent an apartment, so. Anyways, and I know it's an issue for a lot of younger people right now currently, so. No matter how much they make, it's not enough to pull that off, so. Especially if they have any kind of family and insurance is having to come out of that paycheck too, it's, it's over, so. Anyway, so yeah, so I agree with you totally that we can't keep doing this, but at the same time, everybody's got to come together and figure out how to solve this. Cause it can't keep going the way it's going.
This reminded me about school calendars. I don't feel like we've seen one in a while. And I'm always advocating for more empty time for students.
I concur. Okay. If, if I want to spend more money, I want to spend more money on kids getting educated in the seats. That is a.
Well, that's true, but if you can't attract. Good teachers, good luck. So the money that we're spending is directly educating our children and getting good quality staff, so. If you.
I have both parts.
Quite frankly, if you can't compete with the local fast food with your teacher wages, then you're going to struggle doing the best thing for kids.
We have neighboring districts that.
Supplies you have, so.
Say they claim more days than we have, so we should at least start matching neighboring districts.
Maybe, yes. I'm not sure, I mean.
Yeah.
Try hiring. CTE guys right now and see, it's, it's a challenge because they're making significant income and you want to hire them as a teacher. And when all they have to worry about is what's right in front of them, if they're in the private employment. And they're making more money than they are as a teacher, then it's really hard to get them to come and be your teacher. But they're the people that know how to do what you want them to do, so you do have to compete. It's, it's a. Good way.
Okay, all right, so now that we solved all the world's problems.
No, we just.
No, just.
Recognized, acknowledged.
Yep, and there's a lot. All right, well then we will go on to 7.0, visitors to address the board on agenda items.
Got any requests, did you?
All right, so now on 8.0, this has never been the board chairman that did that one before. It was always you.
No, you can, you run it and we still do elections with them.
I don't think it was, but.
I recall what she's talking about, but.
I would be happy to do that.
Feel like it was budget.
Yeah, I just think it's better to do it that way, so.
Kind of like the.
Yeah.
All right, so I will take nominations for the election of the 2024, 25 board chair.
I will nominate Ryan Scholm for board chair.
Okay.
We have a nomination and a second, do we have discussion? Shall we call for the question? Okay, all those in favor of. Mr. Scholl being the board chair for the 24, 25 school year, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Ryan, give him your thing.
Any opposed? He's out, he's there.
Oh, here.
She won. You agree to like it?
That's the one that he was.
I'll, I'll now enter.
Oh, no.
Nominations for the election of the 2024, 25 board vice chair.
Mitch, like Trent Monahan?
I'll second.
There's been a nomination and a second, any discussion? Wait, 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 I apologize. Chairman Scholl.
Oh, yeah.
There might be a meeting.
What were we thinking? Oh my god.
I apologize for stepping on your floor.
Anyway, so 8.2, election of the 2024.
Yeah, it's tied.
Board vice chair. What's that?
I said, we'll have to amend that to say 25, but yes.
Okay.
So should we do a motion to amend 8.2?
We'll just make a motion to do that, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can amend it, 24, 25, for Trent Monahan.
I'm second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Are we discussing the same?
We don't have one that says vice chair, right? We only have the chair one.
Sitting right there.
I don't know, we have no discussion.
There it is, okay, so now you give me yours.
So 3.1, do this 8.3, the 14th.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, Bridge is 9.0, giving me the input, August 14th. Board versus, we cancel that, right?
We've canceled.
So we have August 21st.
No, 28th.
28th, then, sorry.
Which I will not be here for that one.
So I move that we have our next meeting on August 28, 2024 at 6:30 PM.
I'm second, so you're winning.
Yeah, we'd have to make that into a.
No, I'm making a motion here, that's all we're doing, that's what we're doing. This is just a moot statement. We can cancel that, Dave. Okay, you want me to do that first? You want me to cancel August 14th? Is that going to be happening?
I'm not even going there, where.
You're not the chair anymore. What do you think, Brian?
No, it's where you had to make a motion.
Does that have to be in the catalog or do we need to?
I don't think it has to be a motion, doesn't it? We just change a meeting, so I don't think we need to.
So it'll be the 20. The next meeting will be the 28th.
Instead of the 14th.
I'm going to miss that meeting, but maybe, I've got to stop. I didn't realize I was going to be saying, anyway. So we did the end of year thing with the students. I am advocating heavily that we do a beginning of the year with incoming freshmen for what they think they need. And also with incoming seniors and then do a post. So I'm advocating heavily that we do it in a way that is meaningful and prepped before school starts. Or on, around the beginning of the school.
How about the beginning of school? I think we've got a certain place now.
Okay.
That, get things going, we've got the rescheduling program that's really slick. I'm planning on a regular basis meeting students as well, so.
Okay, but as we get the eighth graders coming in, I'd like to get a sense on, what do you think you know? What do you, what do you need to know?
Do you want the seniors and freshmen together or separate?
Separate.
As we do that more like town hall style, can we scatter our boards so that we're all invited?
Yeah.
Even at the same time, I would just like to go sit and observe.
Sure, do you want to join me when I get my schedule?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm thinking that we would all want to join.
Yeah.
Okay.
Before we run off to any, and then, and we're talking about these early plans. We have students that when it comes to assessment day that have a contest of who can miss them all and who can get done the fastest and they just mark one letter. All the way down the page and then turn it in. Is there a way that we can identify those tests and say, well, now you need some remedial work and we're going to work with you on. Saturdays or whatever, but because you need. And then. So that, so that, so that they understand that, that this is a valid test and if you're going to. If you're not going to opt out, that's one thing, but if you're going to do it and make a mockery of it and then smash our test scores. We're going to give you the help that you need to, to learn how to take tests. They may not even know how to take a test.
We, we can look into that. Unfortunately, the state of Oregon has trapped themselves into a corner where we've said. Students don't need to take the test, they can opt out. So we have a large portion of families who are savvy and just say, I'll opt out. And they sign the letter and they send it in and their child opts out.
It's a great time to take vacation.
That's okay, that's okay with me more than the kid that, that then crushes our test scores by, by marking all C.
Well, and I, I guess what I'm getting to is, I know that's not just a problem in St. Helens. And that it's a statewide problem and I've been in meetings with the ODE, ODE director. And also in meetings with the governor sharing our concerns that we're judged by these state assessment scores. If you've allowed, anybody wants to opt out and there's no teeth to them without, you know, platform. So we can look into that, but it's a, it's.
It's a broader problem than I.
And my concern is that they're just scores, it's just information, there's nothing, there's no follow-up, there's no. Planning for that individual student on how we can improve or, or areas of improvement. It's, it's a test that doesn't do it.
And not so long after. Like they need to be able to learn from it, otherwise it doesn't matter.
Especially if you're taking it in March and it doesn't come back till the last day of school.
Another topic for our work session in September, but I thought I'd throw it out there so that it's available. I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, that's it.
That wasn't hard enough.